I'm calling to order the Tuesday, March 22nd, 2022 council work session for the Monroe County Council. Welcome everyone to our first roundtable meeting.
Of the new era?
Of the new era, post-COVID era. Let's make sure that everyone is here and able to vocalize. I will call the roll. Counselor Deckard.
Here.
Counselor Munson.
Here.
Counselor Crossley.
Here.
Counselor Hawke.
Here.
Here. Here. You know, it's been a while since we've been together.
Everybody's here.
Excuse me, Eric. Margie Rice just texted and said that she can't hear anything.
Nope, I can hear now.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. I think the meeting just hasn't started. Hello, everybody.
Hi.
This chorus.
Thank you. So, welcome, Margie, but also welcome to Molly Turner King, our new legal counsel. It's good to have you here. We're really excited that you're able to join us and Jeff, thanks for accompanying her.
No problem.
We are adequately legal.
All lawyered up.
So, on that note, let's adopt our agenda. Does anyone wish to add or remove an item to our agenda? Seeing no additions, then we will proceed unless we have to approve it.
Move, we adopt the agenda.
Thank you. If we have a roll call, vote.
You can do voice.
Voice vote. Oh, in favor of this amazing agenda. Anyone opposed? So now, we move to department updates. I don't have anything on the agenda for department updates specifically. Do we have any departments here who would like to talk to us?
I have seen no raised hands.
The voice from above says no. All right. So, item number four, from our court services department.
Counsel, I move to approve the court's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 4018-0000, Court Interpreters Grant in the amount of $3,871.61 in the services category.
Second.
It should be $72.
Yeah, that's in the packet, yeah.
I.
It just, I think you just misspoke.
I did?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm going to amend my motion and restate it. Counsel, my new motion will be, I move to approve the court's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 4018-0000, Court Interpreters Grant in the amount of $3,872.61 in the services category.
Second.
Thank you. And we have Lisa Abraham here on the screen to talk to us about this. Welcome.
Good evening. Once again, Monroe County was lucky enough to receive a court interpreter grant for 2022. This is a reimbursable grant, so they will, after I start turning my vouchers to them, they will provide the county with the money. This is to offset the cost incurred for interpreter services at court hearings. So I'm just asking the court to appropriate the amount of money as follows in my line item.
Good. Are there any questions or comments from counsel to my right? My left? It's a circle. That's difficult, but you get it. Any public comment? All right, let's have a roll call vote, please.
I'll take care of that. Sorry, Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Our next item is item number five from our highway department.
Counsel, I move to approve the highways, highway department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 1176-0531 Motor Vehicle Highway Maintenance and Repair in the amount of $20,000 in the services category.
Second.
And we have anyone here to talk to us about this?
I'm the liaison, so if it's, if there's no one here to speak to it, I will.
Okay.
Okay, this is just if, in case, a tree removal was, would be needed in the county right of way as they're doing work. So it doesn't mean they'll spend all of it, but they'll just spend as it's needed.
Just, okay, are there any questions? Yes, Counsel.
So, the, in the packet, it's called an on-call construction service. So does that mean that residents can call a number, or do they go onto the website to report a tree being down, or do you know?
Well, if some, as, as they are getting the need to have a tree removal, then they can, they've got dollars there to just go ahead and get that done.
Understood, okay.
This would not be for the public to call and get.
Right, this is. Right, it's as it's needed, as you can see, within the county right of way. You know, let's. See.
But if the public does see a tree fallen in the county.
We still want to know.
Would let us know. And there is a website.
Right.
I don't know what it is, but.
Might not necessarily be under that line, but it would be taken care of.
Is this something that they've had a lot going on in this area and that's why they need more money? Or am I putting you on a spot which I'm not intending?
Right, I'm just saying it's part of the construction. Can you see it? Say it says construction services.
Actually, Lisa says she'll be on a computer in a couple of minutes. I don't know if.
I mean, I saw it presented at the commissioners' meeting, and it's just something that.
Yeah, I mean.
It's just housekeeping, folks. Let's just move.
Yeah, I certainly would have no problem voting for this as is, based on the information we've had.
If it's okay, let's go ahead and proceed. Is there any public comment before we vote? Seeing none, then could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. So now we have the health department, item number six.
Counsel, I move to approve the health department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 8126-9622, Futures Clinic in the amount of $1,700 in the supplies category and $150 in the services category for a total of $1,850.
Second.
Great, and it does look like we have Ms. Cottle from the health department on the screen. Welcome.
Good evening, and thanks for taking care of my laundry list here tonight. I greatly appreciate it. This was last-minute funds that we received from Indiana Family Health Council. They are still titled 10 funds. We had put in a request for them earlier, but they came rather last minute. But these funds will help us get more prepared for telemedicine, so it will include supplies, a laptop and other supplies, and some training so that we can add a robust telehealth to our future's family planning clinic.
Wow, that's very cool. Are there any questions or comments to my right?
I just think this is fantastic. Telehealth is really kind of the way that it seems things are moving, and it's great to see Monroe County headed in that direction, too.
Yeah, you know, that was one thing with COVID when we were closed more and had fewer appointments. We really used telephone medicine more and did what we can, could, but this will, will definitely help us and help our clients.
Are there any other questions from counselors tonight? Right? My left? Nope. All right, then is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. We have a second item.
Correct.
We have item B, CMD.
Counsel, I move to approve the health department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund 81AO-9623 DIS Intervention Grant in the amount of $152,856 in the personnel category and $2,260 in the supplies category and $16,060 in the services category for a total of $171,176.
Second.
Would you like to tell us about this one?
I sure will. So, since the eighties, we have had this grant for disease intervention specialists who work in a 12-county area providing follow-up on sexually transmitted diseases. And last year, this went from a calendar year to an April through March grant, and we are still waiting on the actual award. But we have people working in those positions, so we wanted to go ahead and get this money appropriated. I did get an email actually on the exact amount that we will be getting, slightly less than what we have here, so if you want to make that adjustment tonight, we could do that. We should be getting the award any day now. I'm expecting it, but I do not have it. So, the full award is $170, $250, and when we did this, we based it off of a previous anticipated amount. So we could lower the, the services category by $926. If you were so inclined, and it would be that amount that we are now expecting to get.
I.
Come back later.
I'm sorry, you need to assign it to a particular account line?
Services and charges.
Services and charges.
Yep. So I think it would be $2954 is what that would end up being.
Counsel, move, we reduce line 38110 to 2954.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions on the proposed amendment? Nope. Now, is this a roll call vote?
No, I think you do sit your emotions as a, as a voice.
As a voice.
We'll do the final one.
Okay, okay, so all in favor of amending this motion?
Aye.
Aye.
I get opposed. Okay. So now we have a new total. And am I correct? $170, $250? Is that? Okay, cool. Are there any questions for Ms. Cottle? From counselors on this, or any other comments? Nope, any public comment? Okay, in that case, let's have a roll call vote.
Counselor, Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Now we are at C.
Counsel, I move to approve the health department's request for a category transfer in Fund 8130-0000 NACO Grant in a CCHO Grant of $960 from the supplies category to the services category.
Second.
See, this is NACHO Grant, National Association of County and City Health Officials. We have had funding in there for a while to support tobacco cessation and baby and me program, and we are trying to continue that. The state discontinued that program this past year, so we're trying to continue it to make sure that everybody that we have enrolled can finish that, and hopefully then we can transition into a new program for tobacco cessation and specifically targeting people who are pregnant. But this category transfer will help us pay some incoming bills that we have. That's a proprietary program, and so we do have to pay an administration fee for it.
Okay, are there any questions to my left this time? To my right? Yes.
Penny, in your notes here, you mentioned that the Indiana Department of Health will be just continuing this program. Do you have any indication that it'll come back and restart this program in the future, or do you just not know?
Yeah, they aren't looking to continue this particular program. They are looking at some other opportunities. So we're hoping that in the near future, we'll be able to see what they're doing and tag on to that. They're starting some new programs in terms of infant mortality and those kinds of things, so I'm not sure how all of that will unfold. But we definitely wanted to continue this program, at least with the current people that we have in it.
Absolutely, yeah, this program needs to continue.
Any other comments or questions from counsel? The public comment? Seeing none. We have a.
This one we can do.
We can just by voice vote.
All in favor of the health department's category transfers, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. I'll get this, I'll get this figured out eventually. We're now on item D.
Yes, so what I am asking is, some of you may know, we have, we have a position, one of the positions in the family planning clinic is currently titled an LPN, and it is a nurse that works within the clinic. And it has been vacant for a little while now. We're having trouble filling it. Like many businesses, there's some interest, but we have people sometimes who don't, they schedule an appointment, an interview, they don't show up, or we've had several people, after talking to them, they've decided that it's not what they want, or they've taken another position, those kinds of things, which has led us to really kind of think about what it is that we have in this position. And so my suggestion or request would be that if we could consider changing the name, so it's not a specific certification, it doesn't have to be an LPN, and change the qualifications so that we might be able to take a medical assistant or an associate nurse, though, you know, some other things. There's very little in the job description that, there's only one thing actually in the job description that would be specific really to a medical license. And that can be reassigned to the nurse practitioner and other duties from the nurse practitioner put into this position, so I don't think it will amount to a lot of time. We went through some of the things that typically they do that might need to be taken on by the nurse practitioner, and we're looking at on a daily basis of maybe 15, 10 or 15 minutes at most. So I think that it would be a fairly, I think, it would be a fairly easy adjustment, and I think it could bring us more candidates that could serve our need.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from counselors to my left?
Yeah, so I guess the, the normal process would be then to send this through PAC and run the position change through all the, through all that process. You know, I do wonder if this is a case, since this has already been brought before the entire council, if we ought not to suspend the rules and just consider, because of the nature of this position, because it's highly specialized and also very time-sensitive, very important, that we not, you know, run it through the typical PAC process and instead suspend the rules and just have the position description. Have you rewrite the position, position description as you think is appropriate, and then the council can vote on it directly. Is that, does that seem?
I would like to add that we would not want to make this a normal practice, and so we would not want this to happen routinely. But this is, this isn't like just any other position.
Yeah, that's.
It's so, so different. So, yes, I think this is the right way to go.
And then, Michelle, this would still need to go to WIS, correct? Once the department had rewrites the position description, WIS would then have to approve that and it would come back, right?
That is correct, because with deleting some of those duties, it might change the classification. And Margie Rice would like to speak as well.
I'd like to also suggest that we might start taking a look at charging to the departments the cost of going to WIS. Just like we, with the Youth Services Bureau, so many of those positions. And then, and spread the pain around a bit for that, those charges. It's just, I'm not saying on this one, I'm just saying it's something we might want to consider when we're looking at budgets.
Let's hear from Margie real quick, just in case that's apropos of something.
Hello, so my question is just whether, Penny, if you've already filled out any of the paperwork, like the questionnaires that WIS has, it might be helpful to go ahead, and that's something that Molly or Kim can give you, and Kim, feel free to comment on this, your thoughts to have, to have Penny go ahead and fill out those paperworks just to sort of explain what's going to happen, why you want it changed, because seeing it on paper might be helpful both for the council and for WIS. Is that something that's already happened or something you guys have talked about?
It's not.
No, we have not.
Yeah, it's not something that has happened. I will say that I don't think that form will. There's one, one task that will change, so I'm not sure that in the job description, if we don't have an LPN, and I think that that's the thing. You, you can still seek an LPN, you can still seek an MA or another level nurse who might be able to do that task. So that would be the only change that I would see in the job description. So I'm just thinking about that form, and I don't know.
And so I would like to say, I would, I agree. The form is normally used when it's a brand-new position. What we do, and what WIS has us do is the redline versions, but I can double-check because we normally, we just strike out the duties and then add the duties in red. But I can double-check with them with regards to having to fill out that form when there's just a change to an existing job description. But if we were creating a brand-new job, I can see filling out that form.
So we're changing the name, but the job is.
The same.
Same.
Well, possibly removing, sorry, removing one duty, right? That requires that certification.
Right, so a redline version makes sense.
That makes sense to me, too.
And, and my, my only thought was maybe just take a look at the form and see if there's, and if you've already done it, Penny, you've already looked at it, that's, that's one thing. But you know, maybe, maybe it prompts another question or another thought that you might not be thinking of if there are questions on it. Maybe it's, maybe it's a waste of time, but I would at least take a look at the form if you haven't, and, and Kim, I think that's a great idea to ask WIS if they want it. To paper, paper it up.
Happy to do that.
Counsel Munson?
Yes, I hate to turn my back to the television screen, but that's required to speak into the microphone. I wondered if the job description, the revised job description would say, "and other duties as assigned", because you don't know for sure which applicants you're going to hire for this position. And they. I think you might need some flexibility for this position.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a really interesting point, or other duties as per qualification.
As per qualification. Yeah. Or even any other relevant duties. We don't want to sign her to empty the trash can. Her, him, what, whoever you get. Is this similar to when we tried to hire two part-time people? And we had so much trouble hiring a full-time that we switched and said, well, we'll try two part-time, and then that didn't work, so I know it's not easy to fill this type of position in your department.
Yeah, I, I see it as different from the, kind of, we tried that job share, which didn't work. But in this climate right now, I think filling part-time is probably even harder than filling full-time, but the, the challenges we're facing, I'm hearing from lots of other people in, in industry.
I thank you very much. I, I support this notion and, and sort of this workaround through the PAC process, because I think it meets kind of some of the criteria around how we've done this in the past, as my memory recalls from being on PAC. First of all, we have all three PAC members here. We've discussed, well, the need. We've also discussed some potential complications and not really found anything that I think would halt this. I do think we are in an extraordinary time, and this is a good example of how council can assist with the flexibility needed to support what a department needs right now to, to, to happen in as quickly as possible.
And just to make it explicit, counsel, I move unanimous consent to suspend the normal process and allow the health department to submit the redline, work with the council office to submit the redlined position description directly to WIS, and then present the position description to council directly for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
I choose unanimous consent, unless somebody objects, you could just say it's already.
Does anyone object to the motion?
No.
Me, too.
Okay, so it sounds like you've got some directives, and you can work with WIS, and hopefully get someone in the position. Excellent.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the flexibility to fill it. Thank you so much. I appreciate the flexibility to fill it.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Now we proceed to item seven on our agenda. And I'd like to invite the board of commissioners to join us and discuss future ARPA projects. And we can maybe make sure that everybody on council is able to react to what you all have to present. Welcome.
Hello. How was everyone? It's good to see you all in the Net Youth Room. I had a teaching day, so I just got back in time to get here and didn't want to risk missing getting out to see, to see you in person. I'm going to share my screen. I have a PowerPoint, just a one slider here. And I just want to share with you some projects. So the idea here is that instead of having some council members contacting some staff members in some agencies and then having commissioners do the same thing and that it would be easier to approach this by creating a list to use. This is just a research list. This is not a definitive list. But a research list to start the process of determining needs and priorities. And we thought perhaps that this may be a good thing to approach in teams. So have a commissioner and one, two or three council members working on each item to determine the project scope and the funding need and then to bring it back together. All of these, all of this information in order to make some sort of decision about how to best allocate ARPA spending in Monroe County. So a few of these have asterisks. These are things we think maybe would be useful to use a grant process because it would be multiple agencies or multiple entities who would be receiving potential funding. And again, this is not a definitive list and we want to see if there's anything that you all want to add to this as well. I know we're interested in expanding childcare. That may be more than one agency as well. And a couple that I want to point out, some additional information on is that Monroe County's Fire Protection District is looking at potentially adding some ambulance service to what they already provide in the county. There are, if you listen to dispatch at all, you'll hear that there are a lot of times when we've had to have ambulances on standby from other counties, and that certainly slows response time in Monroe County for our residents. We are concerned about transportation and transit. And we're also obviously considering the potential for some, some social service projects that have some specific needs, including the Osage Place Project for Habitat for Humanity, the Sojourn House renovation, and New Hope has their project on South Madison, where they're adding to their shelter space, increasing it from five, seven families to 12 families and expanding their early learning center from 16 seats to 48. And they're needing some assistance as well. We've talked about assisting homeowners with replacing aged septic, which will benefit everyone in the county with our water quality. We also have internet infrastructure needs. We know that the Highway Department is actively letting internet providers know when we're digging up roadway so that they can add conduit for later fiber. And we know we're doing that, but there's also some federal funding that's coming down the pipe through the state. Each state received $100 million from federal funding. And that's supposed to be distributed based on an FCC service map, but that service map isn't available yet. And that there's a potential for public-private partnerships with some funding from the feds. And there's a couple of other federal programs that who knows, we may be able to tap into 2.75 billion for digital equity and $2 billion in rural utilities, distance learning. So there's a lot of interest in telehealth, distance learning and accessibility that it would make a great difference. But we really need to work with our local internet providers to see what it is they need and determine what happens next. Retention Pond refurbishment is something that Ms. Patonia came up with as a great project that would again benefit all county residents where there are older HOAs, organizations that don't have any funding, but they would have to have something in place where they would have funding in the future. They would need that mechanism in place for the future. So this is not an ongoing project. And then I listed all of the highways from water projects together. Some of these may or may not be eligible for ARPA funding, but these are things that are sort of need to happen. And both Ms. Ridge and Ms. Patonia came up with a great list of projects that could use some assistance. And this is sort of the you know, the end of, you know, if we have some money left, this would be great kind of thing is, is how we're thinking about it. So we wanted to see if there are other projects you all wanted to list on here. And if you wanted to pursue a team process in order to investigate these things, come up with a plan, come up with some sort of proposal to bring back to a group meeting where we could talk through prioritize, this is certainly not a list by priority, prioritize and come up with some sort of funding scope based on the project, based on the needs as to how we would like to utilize this funding. So I'd love to hear your comments. Thank you.
That is a lot to think about.
It doesn't work.
What doesn't? I'm sorry. Oh, so she can see. Right. It's could join the Zoom meeting. Okay. We're having trouble seeing the list.
I will, I will forward this to everyone on email.
That'd be great. Yeah. Ian, let's go ahead and, and get some questions and comments.
Thanks. Excellent list of, of projects to start out with. I guess the one thing I would like to see potentially added would be unmet mental health needs, maybe focused around the Stride Center.
Can we, can we just list that as just under mental health without listing strides? Okay.
Yep. Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out for those of watching that this is a really great example of how commissioners and council work together. I know under the leadership of Commissioner Thomas and Kate Wilts, we've been able to come up with this list and I really appreciate the, the collaboration that you're seeing here. I also want to, you know, really celebrate the fact that this is being done so transparently. This is a lot of money that we're going to be investing in our community and I think as you just saw with Councilmember Kim adding an item to this list, this is not an, and I'll be all list. This certainly can grow as we see other items on there. So I just wanted to take the time to really celebrate this and I certainly wanted to you know, put my support behind a team-based approach.
Thank you. Counselor McKev?
Well, and actually, yeah, the team-based approach is, is a good one. And so what would, what would the next steps be? Is that to, would that just be to have counselors and commissioners communicate to one of the offices, which, you know, which teams they'd be interested in, in participating and investigating?
Yeah, I, I think that would work really well. And then we can start creating teams and groups and start working on our various projects of interest. There are things that we all have some experience with, some background in, or some affinity for, that I think it will be pretty easy to come up with teams to, to approach this. And I think we can move really quickly on this as well. There are some things. For example, the Convention Center renovations, Habitat, Sojourn House, New Hope, these are defined projects where they have very specific needs that we would just need to sit down and think about, you know, how much, what we could contribute, what we think would be appropriate to contribute, if anything. And so there's not much that needs to be done, but things like the ambulance service, I've already started working with the Fire Protection District on this. They're, they're working through a lot of budget issues and the logistics of putting something like this together. And, you know, we could only, if we did anything, we could only provide capital support. So they'd have to figure out personnel. And, you know, so, so there are some things that need more research than others, and I can mark them that way. So if folks have limited time, maybe they can jump on with some of the smaller projects. That might work.
Great.
Are there any other questions about some of these projects presented? Yes, Counselor Drucker?
Thank you very much. And the list is exceedingly comprehensive. And as I look at it, it occurs to me that there are probably individuals or organizations that might have even other ideas beyond this. And I'm not necessarily saying what those are, that that there are individuals or organizations that would. Is there any thought to leaving a slight period of time for others who have perhaps not stepped forward, come to us, et cetera, to, to submit, you know, think about this, think about that, et cetera. You know, of course, a limited window of time as the, before the committees begin their, or not committees, the teams would begin their work, et cetera.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea. We've had, we had on our website for quite some time some open-ended, you know, what, how would you like us to spend ARPA money? And we didn't see anything that isn't already here on this list. But certainly anybody in the community who has other ideas, they're welcome to email us. You can just email me, jthomas@co.munro.us and we'll make sure that we add this, whatever project it is to this list to be considered. And, you know, once we can assign teams and start working, I think, and if there are other things that come up, we can just be flexible and agile and add those in and see if we can form new teams if we need them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thomas. And I, I would also, I appreciate the list. But I also would add in, there may be departments internally that have thoughts and perhaps haven't stepped forward. And I, again, I'm not saying anyone specifically, but I know that sometimes people can be timid to come forward with things and now would not be a time to be that timid. So maybe not.
Right. And, and you mentioned that, and I think that's a really good, a good thing to think about. And so we can get a message out to the departments as well. I know one of the things that we talked about with Ms. Nestor Gellin recently was, you know, the cost of getting all of our backlog of data uploaded into our new online system, and that would allow all of our departments that utilize it from building to health to planning to highway to benefit from having that data uploaded into the system, but it's very specialized and I don't know what that cost would be. But that was an idea that came up. So I think we can get an email out to department heads and have them send that back. And again, we can just add that to the list and nothing's promised here, but certainly I think the more we investigate, the better off we'll be.
Okay, I'm sorry. I've got, I've got all kinds of things in my head because you, there's so many ideas.
There are, there are some very general ones and some very specific ones. So it's quite a list.
Right. Counselor Munson, you have a question?
So I won't be shy about mentioning improved services for our elderly residents. Not many of them can get to the facilities in Ellisville. And we have a very important East Side program, but space for that is an issue. And also there are there are organizations, I think, who would be interested if they had some help in partnering with Area 10 to have at least a weekly or bi-weekly nutrition program, which provides so much more than nutrition. It is, it is a key health check for people when they attend these, and it is also very important for their socialization.
Absolutely. Great. Got it on our list.
I would just like to say, I just want to echo some of the sentiments of the other council members as well. This is definitely something that the public should definitely be active and involved in because this is a really big deal. And I definitely want to emphasize the fact that I think it would be a really great idea, as Councilmember Iverson said, to have that joint collaborative effort between the commissioners and the county council alike, so that, you know, this whole process is very transparent and open for the public to see as well. So I would love to see how we can have a joint session where the public would be invited, as well as the department heads as well. And then the only other thing that I would just like to add, of course, because this again is a great list, but you know, sometimes public has input or, you know, things that we're not thinking about right now, that would definitely be a need that we can add to this list. But the one thing that I see that I would want to see if we could add is DEI initiatives as well. And just wanted to, you know, just put that out there and see what we can do. But yeah, other than that, I'm excited to get to work with the commissioners and hope y'all are too. And yeah.
Yeah. So are you thinking, just for clarity, Ms. Crowe, are you thinking about DEI initiatives for county employees, specifically for, for the public in general, right?
Yes. Yeah.
Great.
Are there any other suggestions?
I think we all received the information sent to us from the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, where they had identified many of the needs as well as different funding sources. So we want to make sure that when we have the opportunity to work our funding source in with other ways to get the job done, that we need to keep our eye on that. So this is a big job. And I hope that we understand that the dollars need to be something that will be long-lasting for the most people in Monroe County, that it's not just a quick one and done and, and not still be there to see the difference that, that we have this once in a lifetime opportunity to make that we'll be able to see something permanent and long-lasting for the people here in Monroe County.
Yeah. Counselor Hawk, I totally agree with you. And I think we all went into this with that approach of, of looking for projects that had permanence and and a benefit to as many residents as possible. And indeed, one of the things the teams will have to do and should do is to look at other funding sources and seeing if we can leverage ARPA funding toward a grant or something else for an agency or for a project. And I think that's one of the things that each team will, will want to look at. I mentioned, for example, the the broadband initiative, that's something where we would need to look at what is, what's going on at Okra, what's going the broadband initiative, that's something where we would need to look at, what is, what's going on at Okra, what's going on at the state, where's the funding, what is it geared for, how can we utilize it? You know, and, and I think that's a, a good example of that other research that needs to happen. But we can't all be doing this research. I think it's much more efficient to work in teams, but looking at those other funding opportunities is very important.
The other suggestion I had, and I apologize, I'm not hearing Commissioner very well. It's echoing. Is that, oh, well, I'm glad to hear that. I thought maybe it was just me. But I hope that when we're talking about housing, that we're making sure we have the right players at the table who have long-term knowledge. And that is especially those people in the mortgage industry and in the construction industry, because they know how to put this together. Let's not send out people to put this together. This never tried to figure out how to build housing or how to get the mortgages for people for the housing, because we, we simply can't provide mortgages. We have to have that, that way to, for people, the workforce to actually be able to go out and qualify to buy that. And of course, you know, I'm, I'm a big supporter of rural housing. It used to be called Farmer's Home. It's something I worked with since the 1970s. It was a lot of first-time home buyers, and they don't even have to be first-time home buyers, but people who maybe struggle getting into that house and get the roof over their head. And those are programs that we need to make sure we're, we're seeing if there's some way that we can work with that to get those kind of projects put together.
Right. And, and I agree. And I think one of the things as well is renovations of rural housing is something that often gets overlooked as well. Helping folks with that, that part of the process. Okay.
I just wanted to follow up, since Counselor Hawk mentioned the BEDC report, which is very, very well researched and put together, that actually the BEDC board meeting tomorrow morning, which I believe Counselor Munson is going to be attending on our behalf at eight o'clock tomorrow, will be a
Seven forty-five, I thought.
They made for networking early. Yeah. The meeting actually will begin at eight, but a presentation from Baker Tilly on, on some of these funding issues. And so I'm glad you're able to go. I'm, I'm going to be on travel tomorrow morning, so I'm not going to be able to attend. But please do.
I think that's available through Zoom as well.
Is it?
I believe so. Because Babette and I plan to be barking our way through it. We'll, we'll do it silently, but I'd like to, to be able to hear what's going on.
Well, I want to know what Babette thinks, too.
Yeah. Well, I'm glad, I was glad to hear that you're able to go.
Yes. Are there other ideas or questions about the list? Okay. And next steps, I've, I've got some of the things written down, but you'll send us your list, Commissioner Thomas?
Right. I have the list here. I will send that out in email form along with what was added today. And I will note some of the smaller projects where things are a little bit more defined, so that folks know what they're getting into. And then I think each department should just collect names and figure out, you know, who can, who can work on what issues and who wants to work on what issues. And, and we'll move forward from there. And I'm, I'm hopeful that within a month or two, I would, I would think within a couple of months, we should be able to get back together and, and talk through all that we found out, maybe sharing some information initially, and then coming back and, and talking through priorities and allocating some, some of the spending.
Okay. That sounds really good. I'm gonna work with Kim to kind of coordinate gathering names for whoever might be interested on our end. And hopefully we can get, get moving. This is exciting.
Very exciting. It is, as Counselor Hawk says, once in a lifetime. So let's make the most of it.
Yep.
Look forward to working with you all.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Lost everything here. All right. We are on item number eight.
Counsel, I moved to approve Resolution 2022-10, Monroe County Personnel Administration Committee PAC 2022 meeting schedule changing from the first Monday of the month to the first Tuesday of the month.
Second.
It's just housekeeping.
It's just housekeeping. I don't even think it needs an explanation. We're gonna move the meetings. Are there any questions?
We talked about this in PAC. Everyone's okay with it.
If you're all okay with it, that's okay with me. Is there any public comment on this item? Oh, all right. All in favor of Resolution 2022-10, changing the meetings to the first Tuesday of the month, say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion has passed unanimously. Item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the request of in the 2022 Salary Ordinance and Fund 11590000 Health Department Account Line 10101, Health Commissioner to Health Officer to match the approved job description.
Second.
More housekeeping.
More housekeeping. Correct. Are there any questions about this item?
Just move, except.
They're about to ask for public comment, though, real quick. I didn't see any. Just in case. Oh, no. All in favor of amending the 2022 Salary Ordinance, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion passed unanimously. And that brings us to council comments, number nine. And first, are there any counselors who wish to make comments? Yes, Councilor Cross.
Just on a light note, the IU women's basketball team just made one, by one point, yes, or the difference was on one point. And my family and I definitely have supported IU women's sport over the past 10 years, and it's been amazing to see their journey. So I don't know if any of them are watching. But we are super fans, and we are so proud of them going to the Sweet 16. They play UConn, so that's going to be very interesting. But congratulations to the team. We know some of the coaches. And we just wanted to say we are all rooting for them, and we hope that they go on to the Elite Eight.
You're here.
Right. This is something I think that we need to be considering. It is a work session, so we can just throw anything out there. And I know that we feel like we've had some things thrown our way. We knew it was coming, but it looks as if we're going to have to look very closely about what's happening with our colleagues at the city council. And we know that if, if indeed this income tax is passed, as has been discussed, that if it is passed in the form of an economic development tax, that there's two ways that they can decide to distribute the dollars. It can either be distributed through the total property tax levy. And so we know that if that $10 million, remember, the total property tax levy means that they count debt, whereas we understand the way distribution is made now with the certified shares, the new debt is not included. So that will change the distribution favoring those, those huge debts. And it's being proposed to be a $10 million debt. So if that's added on to the rest of their property tax levy, that's going to be a big change here for our revenue. The other way that, that they could, and remember, it's the city council who will decide this. It's not the mayor. It's the city council who will make that decision. So the other way that it could be voted on, and they can change this every year, whether or not to do it through the, the property tax levy, or they could do it through the population method. So as their population grows, they will receive a much larger percent of it. Now, I just received the report, I think we all did, about our, the population just today, even though the auditor sent it out on the 10th. So we've got to figure out a way to, we get what she sends out that day. But at any rate, if, with the information that the state had sent out just a few days ago, and I shared it with everyone, the city would be getting something like 58%. That was all nearly 60% of the total revenue coming in. And so this year's revenue, I believe, was something in, was north of 30,000, was about 30, I mean, million, 32 million for that, for what would have been the certified shares. So if they should take it up about that far, then the city, and if they use population method, the city would get very close to 60 cents on the dollar of every dollar every taxpayer pays, whether you live in the city or out of the city. Because this tax goes on every person who lives in Monroe County, no matter where you work, that income tax, when you pay that, you pay it to the state. And to be very clear, the some, there was a confusion about how it's paid. It's when you make out your, your tax forms when it's time to pay your taxes, and you send in your income tax. Then it goes up to the state. Well, you know, gratefully, the state is reducing the state's income tax. Well, we're, we're going to raise and make the difference. But that's, that, those dollars, whether you live in Steinsville or Hairsburg or Unionville or in town Bloomington, those dollars go to the state. Then the state figures out what that total is going to be. And the state tells us how to split that up. We don't get to choose that. Once we figured out the method, if it's going to be population or property tax levies. So I just, I want to make sure that everyone understands this affects everyone, whether you live in the city of Bloomington or outside of the city of Bloomington. And this is a major, big deal. The other thing is with our public safety tax, because the way that's distributed, they include that in your total property tax levy. So first of all, it goes to central dispatch, then it goes to any of the other units that the income tax council might decide that they want to send money to the different federal departments, whatever. And then the rest of it's distributed to, between Bloomington and Monroe County and Ellisville, a little bit to Steinsville. So that is, that goes by your total property tax levy. So that debt will bring in more money to the people who have that really high debt. And that's just the way that is set up by the state. We don't change that for, for the public safety tax. Those are things I think is important for us to remember as we're making our projections. And right now, hopefully, the abstract is, I don't know whether the abstract is finished or not, the auditor only has till the end of the month. Is it finished, do you think? Because this is when we start looking at our 1782, our financial statement that was sent back to the state, and we start looking at that and comparing it to what it is, we believe we're going to see with the abstract and start looking at cash balances and so forth, and seeing if we need to make a projection for this year of what we thought this year, our revenue and expenses were going to be, and see if we think we're going to have to make any adjustments. So those are things we need to be working on very soon. And I thank you for letting me take your time.
May I just add on one thing? I, I, I don't disagree with anything Counselor Hawk said about the, the method by which the, the income tax would be allocated. I just want to kind of temper some of the comments about the debt. It's not, you know, it's not the total debt that changes the balance of where the income, it's the annual levy. It's the annual levy. And so they're talking about a $10 million bond or two, two $5 million bonds over a five million, or a five-year period. So we're still talking about $2 million in debt, in annual debt service, which is, and you know, that combined with their existing debt service would still be about the same as we typically do a bond for. I know Counselor Hawk doesn't always support those bonds, but that is what we typically do. So I don't want anybody to think that suddenly the city is going to be jacking up their, their annual debt levy far beyond what the county is, that they'd be approximately the same as. But right, it will, it will increase it, but I'm saying it will not increase it beyond what is normal for the county to, to use debt service in a year.
Their debt service is going to be higher, perhaps. Do you not think? Well, not by the way we did the jail. We don't know.
Anyway.
We don't know. But I wanted to make sure I understood something that you said, which is annually, they could change
Yes.
the way it's figured.
Yes, annually, unless they tie it to a bond, a debt. Once again, we're talking about the economic development portion, they can change it. They could start out saying it's going to be the total property tax levy. Once again, to come back to what Councilmember McKim said, it's a levy. It's what they actually are going to be charging the taxpayer, that the tax levy for each year, they could use that way to distribute. And the following year, they could change it and say it's the population. And then the next year, they could change it back, except that if they tie it to some kind of a debt, and people are counting on.
But for that matter, they could change any of the, they, they could change the rates, they could change the, the balance between public safety and economic development. I mean, they could move that slider as well as.
Remember when we used to think we knew exactly what was going to happen, and then the state said, no, we're throwing it all in all these different
In a different bucket.
Changed it.
So it was my understanding that once debt was tied to a particular tax, you could not change the method.
That's it.
Of collecting it. Is that correct?
Yes, once they, until that.
So if it's, if it's a levy and the debt's tied to it, then it's going to stay the levy until that debt is paid off on that.
I, I think, I thought the way I read it, the debt would had to be tied to the revenue coming in for this, that they were tying it back to that as the duty to pay the debt. But now I, you know, that's a good question to ask.
What if we bonded on our share, then would that prevent the city from changing?
Just about to ask about that.
I mean, we, I mean, once it's done, they can't, but yeah. When do we do the tale?
Streaming in public.
There's no better place. That's very interesting, and I appreciate you sharing that. I might have to listen to it over again to fully absorb it.
And then, and then we need to listen to the experts tell us what part I got right, what part I got wrong.
That's what AIC is.
Because let me tell you what, that's why we have experts looking at us.
Absolutely.
I'm certified, I know.
I am certified. I'm a member.
I got a card. This shall pass around some papers for us to look at. Would you like to give us a little explanation?
Um, last year, I started trying to work on a spreadsheet for you guys so that you could see the additional appropriations as they were done. It got to be cumbersome because it was, instead of looking like this, it was just like one huge, long, and it was just, I didn't like it. And so then Meghan went on maternity leave, and I just kind of lost my way with it, you know, and ran out of time. So I'm just, I'm trying to revamp this, and this, the top page just tells the funds that I'm looking at doing monthly. And if you want another fund in, you know, thrown into this mix, that's fine. And what it would look like is on page two, and I used the general fund as an example. I didn't get the year in, all of the year-end totals done, but at least it'll give you an idea of what you'll be looking at monthly with regards to the fun, to the funds on the front page. And so, I mean, if you like it, if you don't like it, if you see a different way you would like to see information presented.
This is for your exploration and reaction.
Yeah. And you can email me and say, you know, I want, you know, to add, you know, I'd like to see such and such fund added, you know, kind of thing. So.
Any immediate thoughts?
What? The row labeled cash balance. What is that actually supposed to be? Sorry.
That, that's a typo up there at the top. Is that the one you're talking about?
The one that has 166.
Yeah, that's a typo. That's a typo. I saw that after I printed it and went, oh, perhaps.
Sorry. Thank you.
So what is that supposed to be?
At the very top, it says current month in totals. I got the cash balances 166 million. You know, yeah, it's like, no, that's not right.
She's saying it's wrong.
It's wrong. It's a typo.
Right. That's what I was asking.
It's wrong. Yeah. This is a work in progress.
So in general, I love that it's one page, especially if you're going to be working on 10 funds. It seems to maybe reduce the workload on you, but also give us the information we need. It's also easy to just see it at one glance. So I'm, I like this so far.
Well, and that's what I was trying to do because the one that I had developed earlier, it was just like several pages. And the information was, you know, like, you might have had like 2017 at the top, but you had like 2021 at the bottom. And you couldn't really, you know, see the comparisons as well. I, you know, so that's why I changed it up.
So this won't be one page once we have all the other funds. It'll be a page per fund.
It'll be a page per fund, but yeah. But at least you'll have it per fund and you can see it easier, I believe. So. And then the current month in totals will, you know, fluctuate every, you know, every month, of course. And then, you know, you'll also be able to have at the very end of it is the year-end totals. And so you'll be able to see all the year-end totals comparisons to what we've done in the past.
This is helpful.
Forty million dollars.
Any other questions or comments? I'm just gonna.
Yeah, it's like.
Thank you.
Continue on.
Sorry. Sorry.
Don't worry. Thank you for this. I appreciate it. And look forward to seeing it kind of fleshed out. If anyone has any suggestions, if you look closer.
Yeah, definitely. Just give me an email and I'll, I'll work on it for you.
Okay. Very cool. Are there any other? Thank you, Kim. Okay.
When we're talking about additionals, it would be good to know at some point in time, maybe even do it quarterly, what additional that is that's going to be ongoing, that will still be something we have to consider for the following year. So if we did additionals to add on some kind of something special that we know is forever, then we know that's really eating into the next year's levy growth or whatever we have that we think is going to sustain it. So someplace in there.
So.
Because some of these additionals might be just one time only.
Yeah.
I think so many of our additional appropriations are for grants. And I consider this just like a different category of operations. Is there any way to take into account what Counselor Hawk said and also to put the grants in their own bucket?
Well, this is general fund.
Yeah, that is just general.
Okay.
And the list that I'm planning on is.
It's not any, okay, good. Yeah, you would. So that's good. Thanks.
Yes, I'd like to see when, when you're able to get to something else, that the next thing you work with would be the public safety because we know that county general and the public safety dollars, we need to keep an eye on both of those.
Well, and that's, that's on the list here.
Right. But I mean, if you. Rather than starting the top and going to the bottom, you might.
Oh, I understand.
See, I'm saying, I think we need to, if you can only get to one, next time.
All right. Thank you. Again. Are there any other comments from members of council for this lovely evening?
They like saving.
Daylight savings.
Thank you, Congress. They did it again.
It's hard living at the edge of a time.
Yes, it is.
All right. I'm going to adjourn this meeting. We are adjourned.